All right, I'd like to call to order the April 10th, 2023 Mount Lake Terrace Planning Commission meeting to order. Please take your role.
Chair Batista.
Here.
Vice Chair Sandoval. Commissioner Betcher.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson.
Present.
Commissioner Harrison.
Present.
Commissioner Morgan.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, item number three, approval of the March 27th, 2023 meeting minutes. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to those minutes? I am not hearing or seeing any, so we'll go ahead and declare those accepted as presented. Item number four, public comment. The record show there is no public here in person tonight. Is there anybody online who wishes to speak to anything that is not on tonight's agenda?
No public comment had been received by 4:00 PM today. No one has signed up for in-person, and no one has been seen on virtual attendant tonight.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to item number five, continued discussion on proposed amendments to engineering standards and stormwater and sewer.
Thank you very much. I am Rich Meredith, the city engineer for Mount Lake Terrace. I'm going to share my screen. Well. I know there's a display button on here. There it is. All right, so we're on our third meeting of discussing changes that we're planning on doing for the engineering standards for Mount Lake Terrace. Basically, we're calling this document our Engineering Development Manual. And as a part of that, we're going to have updates to the standard details. We're going to be recommending items to pull out of the code, repeal it out of the COB, and have it live in this document. There are some standards that are currently living in some of the transportation plans and the comprehensive plans that should all be really located in one document. So the more we get into this, the bigger this effort becomes. So we're giving it to you in small bits. And what we're, I'm going to zoom ahead here. This is kind of a recap. We've said this the last couple of meetings, but for people who haven't seen this before, we have design requirements that are scattered in different places. And because when you scatter your design information in different places, whenever you update it, it's hard to catch them all, so you're developing consistencies after a while. Plus, when all your design standards and code requirements are in different places, it's hard to make sure you've caught them all. So what we're doing is we're developing this document just to, it's going to really improve our consistency and clarity to our customers. And it's going to make it easier for internal staff when they're reviewing to have a document to support, you know, any requirements that we may need to ask for for development. So tonight, I've had to rearrange the schedule a little bit because we weren't able to be here last meeting. So tonight, I'm going to go over some of the questions that we had with the stormwater and sewer, and then move into presenting new sections on water, construction, and inspection, and some of our closeout. I've also brought, I didn't give you a chance to look at it, but I brought the appendices, two of the sections from the appendices. One of them is Appendix K, our approved stormwater facility planting list, and then our stormwater development guidelines. They kind of fit into some of our revisions that we've made to the stormwater section. This is our proposed schedule now that we've had to revise it. I've actually added another meeting in here. It's going to be the June 12th meeting. I believe after we've had a chance to review all the sections, I think one last look at the entire document and the appendices, that's going to be a big review, but I think it would be good for everybody to see that in case they have any more comments before we go into public hearings and such. So with that, I'm going to go to Stop/Share, and then go to, all right, I'm going to zoom in on this a little bit. All right. So some of the questions that I took back at our last meeting had to do with, let me see here, I had a note that, I'll get to it, when we get up to them, I'll talk about them, but I wanted to go over a couple of the changes that we've made as we've been going through this. I'm going to scoot over to here. So I had Laura Reed, our stormwater manager, look through this, and she's kind of highlighted some of the areas. Gosh. I'm going to stop sharing because this is not working well for me. I don't want to leave. I want to, okay, I'm good. I need to go here. Can I open this just with, can I open it with Adobe? Adobe? Yeah.
Oh, here, of course.
Right.
Then the engineer here, this is the PDF version. Open it.
This one, right?
Yeah.
I just want to be able to zoom in a little easier. That's not it. I need this one. This is better. Thank you. All right, back to Zoom. Share Screen. This one. This should be a little bit easier to share or see. All right. One of the items that Laura wanted me to highlight here is we're making some clarification to element seven, protecting our drain inlets. I think our current language doesn't take into account adjustable frames and the existing socks that they put in the catch basin to catch material has little, well, felt flaps that stick up. You've seen the little ears on there, and those things can actually divert water sometimes and trap stuff, and maybe doesn't give you the protection that you would hope for. So she's clarified the language a little bit so that we have something that's more effective when we're codified in here so that when we need to go do enforcement in the field if we're having a problem, it's there. Let's see, she's also. Section. We also wanted to highlight that we strengthened the language here on section M1, and these are elements that we are enhancing that are in the current stormwater manual. We're following the Snohomish County Stormwater Manual. And in this one here, as we require infiltration facilities, one of the issues that comes up is they don't always work as they were intended to because maybe there was a construction issue or not. So she's clarified it with some of the language about having a geotech engineer or be observed by a licensed geotech engineer to make sure that they're being installed correctly so they'll perform as needed so that we can get the benefits that we have to get from these infiltration facilities. Another area that was not really clarified, although we've been doing it for the last five years, is, it seems kind of obvious, but project design shall keep the runoff from public right of way separate from onsite. There are some times that, well, as a public entity, we can't allow our runoff to go into private property. And so it's not codified anywhere, so this is one of the elements that we just said, oh, no, this isn't there. So we added it in there just to try to make sure that's really clear between both our runoff and the runoff coming from private property. We have some additional language in there for that. Let's see, one of the questions that came up last time, we have language in here about keeping infiltration facilities away from landfills. That's this one right here. I have checked with our GIS folks, and we've checked some of the records, and we can't find any records of landfills. So we're going to delete this paragraph, and if we happen to run into that issue or become aware of that a landfill is out there, then we'll clearly mark it on the maps. But for now, if it doesn't exist, why have the language in there? So that'll be deleted.
Would discovery after the fact on something like that would be just if somebody has a project and they start digging and all of a sudden they're hitting trash heaps after trash heaps?
Usually a landfill, when they decommission it, it's covered with so much dirt, I guess unless you're drilling a well through it, it's pretty hard to find something. But we're up on the plateau and kind of a plateau. So usually if there was a landfill, it would be something a little lower. And again, if nobody knows that there's one here by now, then chances are we're, the odds of hitting one are pretty slim. Let's see, then as we go into stormwater. We added some language about pump systems. We don't use a lot of pump systems in our conveyance, or, you know, we try to use gravity for all of our stormwater facilities. There are times when you'll need to have a pump, and we don't have very many of them yet, but we were anticipating that as we get more and more developed here in the city, that we may end up having to use more pump systems. And we didn't have a whole lot of guidance on that. So we've got this whole section on pump systems that we've filled out with more criteria to help guide people, designers, when they're trying to do a pump system, if that's something that is the best solution out there. So I just wanted to highlight that as something that's kind of new.
That taken from any specific code, such as county or state?
I'm not sure exactly where we culled it all from, but what we've been doing through this is we've been reviewing language in a lot of the neighboring jurisdictions in the county and kind of cherry picking what seems to work best for the city of Mount Lake Terrace. I got some further discussion that'll highlight some of that coming up here. Let's see, rockeries and retaining walls, there's not a lot of language about how the rockeries and the retaining walls affect, how they interact with our drain systems. So we wanted to start putting in some language and maybe clarifying that about where pipes would cross under a retaining wall, kind of highlighting that, you know, ditches are going to treat water a lot better than pipe facilities, and so we're going to want to encourage that as much as possible, more of the natural runoff instead of trying to bury everything in pipes, just because the water quality improvements, you know, can't be ignored. So we wanted to put some language in there. Let's see. And if you have questions as we go along, I'm going through this pretty quick, and so I wanted to give everybody a chance to ask questions. I wanted to stop here. I think that, oh, no, it's coming up. Sorry. Yes, it's next item here. One of the discussion items we had last time had to do with sewer connections for an RV. Yep, recreational sewer vehicle sewage disposal. I didn't know if we still had questions about that, but through our review of this, Kristi was saying, I believe her understanding was that there was a two-week limit to live in an RV on your property. I haven't verified the code or anything on that yet, but that was one of her understandings. In the code, it says if you're going to park an RV on your property, it has to be on a permitted surface. But I think, I think we were having some discussions about how much impervious surface you're allowed to have on your property, and the percentage of impervious surface that's allowed in a front yard, I think, is 50% right now, which is really high. We've had some permits where people want to pave their front yard to go park cars on that. So one of the recommendations that we're going to propose through this is some modifications to the code to reduce that percentage to something lower, I want to say less than 25%, so that we can try to avoid having people using their front yards as a parking place. I see in my review of some of the other jurisdictions that they're limiting the number of RVs you can have or the number of cars, and they have to be in a drivable or an all-weather surface on the side of the house, but not in the front yard. And I think that's something that there's, it's happened a lot in Mount Lake Terrace, but I think as we tighten up the code, we can maybe prevent future parking in the front yard. So that'll be one of the code amendments that we'll be bringing. As for this here section, we were just proposing that if you're going to put in an RV sewer disposal system, that you have to get a permit. It still is going to be subject to any other codes and conditions that we have out there if you have to live in an RV. So I think one of the discussion items was if we have it in here, will that encourage that behavior? And that, I don't have a good answer for it, so I guess the question would be, should we have a note on here, or should we be silent on it and deal with it on a case-by-case basis?
Is this impervious surface limit in this document, or is that in the zoning code?
It'll be, I believe it'll be in the zoning code, and there'll be some mention of it in this document also, because once we have the percentage identified in the code, then we would have language in here that would dictate, you know, how you would build the surface or, you know, what limitations there are if you have a surface.
Okay, so then it's in the zoning code's position to dictate, like, you know, the impervious surface for a lot, and whether it's the lot or the front yard, and whether the building also counts as impervious surface typically?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Let's see. That pretty much skims through the sections that we covered the last time. If anybody has any questions on that. If not, I'll move into the new section, which is our water.
Actually, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Going back on, probably on your document, page 83, the vertical conveyance, conveyance system, vertical clearances, you know, there's several different types of utilities that are mentioned, and, you know, what the clearance needs to be above or below. For a lot of the different categories, it says above or below. But the different utilities may have their own requirements. You know, they say thou shalt not ever put something above our line, or ours always has to be on top, or ours always needs to be on the bottom. So is that, is it just left above or below in the city's document to allow that flexibility for, say, snow pud? You know, they say, oh, we always want ours to be on the very top. There's that flexibility there?
Exactly. Actually, we'll see in the water section that we, if the water's crossing over, say, a sewer, we want the water on top. So it's flexible in what we have here, but there are going to be some other entities or other criteria through here that will maybe specify that a little tighter.
Because the city itself is the water and the sewer, but we're dealing with other agencies for just about everything else?
Yes. You know, dry utilities, I don't know it's as much of an issue because I know that with the Main Street project, we're looking to install them in a joint utility trench. So there's not as much of an issue with above and below as long as they have their own space. But definitely there's an issue with some of the wet utilities and where the different utilities are crossing.
I have a question. What do you mean by, I don't know the word or terminology, dry utility? What does that mean?
Oh, a wet utility sewer, water, storm. But the dry utilities are something that aren't wet, so you're going to have electrical, communications, things like that.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
I also had a couple of questions.
Okay.
I know last time there was some discussion about low-impact development and how that code section relates to this section. I don't recall how we ended that discussion, but I do know that it, like a lot of the impervious, or a lot of like the pervious surface requirements and bioswales and things like that have a strong connection with LID. Does that live in this document?
We did have that discussion, and I don't think we're, I don't think we're complete on that yet. There should be some references in the stormwater for LID, but right now, most of our LID criteria is in the details. So we have a number of details that, should you do LID, then here's how you would do it. So it's still a work in progress, and you'll see more of it when we get into the details. And I think you'll see some of it when we, if it's not in the appendices, I think that might be an important one to have, so.
Okay. I also had a couple of questions on the pumps as well. It sounds like this is a new kind of facility that we haven't really had before in Mount Lake Terrace, and this is something we're adding to our development standards?
We don't have a whole lot of pump stations for our storm yet, but we're anticipating that we may need some in the future, and we want to have some design criteria in place to help the designers build them to something that we can use.
Okay, could you describe what kind of conditions they typically be used in and where they would typically be located?
Well, one example is actually in the Main Street project. We talked about, or we're discussing internally, there's a detention vault currently planned in 56th. And originally, it was planned in 234th, but for cost savings purposes, it was changed to 56th. We're looking to relocate it back to 234th, just because it's a lower-volume street, so it's a lot easier to do inspections and maintenance on it. Trying to maintain a giant stormwater vault in 56th is going to be problematic. And then because of its location at 234th, elevation-wise, it's too low to really take advantage of our regional stormwater facility here on site. So we're considering if it makes sense to put in a pump in there to pump the water up into the regional stormwater site. So we would have a detention vault there, but we would also have the capability to use the infiltration at the regional site. So that would be one example where we would do that.
Okay, so it gives us some extra flexibility then in terms of designing our stormwater system, and we would anticipate more runoff, but that's something that this kind of holistically looks at.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. I apologize, I didn't read this before coming, so I haven't done the appropriate homework. For those pump stations, I know one of the things that we sort of, you know, I guess defer to the state on is the local noise ordinance. Like, a lot of cities surrounding us will like kind of be a little bit more specific about what sort of noises they prohibit. So in terms of like impacts on surroundings and things like that, could you describe sort of like, you know, if this is running a lot or during stormwater things, what kind of mitigation measures you have to sort of, you know, keep it from being like a sore thumb?
You bring up a good point with the noise ordinance. I was going to talk about that when we get into construction. We don't have a whole lot of language on noise yet, and I'm not sure, we would certainly, if we were to put a pump in the town center area, we would, we would make sure that we had a pump that was low noise. I think they may cost a little more, but not having that ambient noise or something that's louder than the ambient noise is vital. So I don't have a whole lot to say about it, but I know that we can, we can design them to be as quiet as possible. There's some pretty quiet pumps out there on the market. And then if, as we go into the noise ordinance, we have some suggested changes to the noise ordinance to make that a little more in line with what a lot of other cities and jurisdictions are doing here in Mount Lake Terrace.
Okay, fantastic.
Yeah.
I think that was all my questions. Thank you.
Okay. So in the public water system, I'm just going to highlight a couple of areas here. A lot of this is, I guess, current practice, but it's not really, it's not really written down again. And so our challenge here is just to try to pull all the different things that we're currently doing or that other jurisdictions are doing, and try to get them in one spot. So, let's see, 27, 7. One thing I wanted to highlight in our water is we actually have not been practicing corrosion protection, and corrosion protection is kind of an important tool. So without having any language up till now, we wanted to make sure that we started to address this. So we have a section on corrosion protection. Right down here, we actually put in here a water line proposed within 25 feet of surface light rail should have a corrosion protection plan. Looking a little further, I think that we could probably reduce that if we wanted to, but I don't know if we want to. I think it's better to be a little bit more conservative instead of, some jurisdictions can get within 10 feet. But for starters, I think that since we have a new light rail system and everything should be designed correctly at this point, I think we'll just leave this language in here. We're proposing to leave that, so.
In terms of surface track, that's, that's a very small segment of the line that runs through Terrace anyway.
Yes. Well, it's still, even if it's vertical, you still have the foundations, the, you know, the columns and the footings and such, so. Yeah, we're trying to, I think it's the vibrations and, you know, there's a lot of details that go into that. But just having some language in there to help us address our pipe design so that we can avoid any problems with them. Usually it means that if you're going to be within this area, you're going to sleeve them, sleeve the pipes. And let's see, here's another change that we're proposing. Currently, our, I brought an example too. Currently, we allow new meters, new hookups for residential to be either a 5-inch pipe or a 3/4-inch pipe, and we have a connection fee that is lower than a 1-inch pipe. A 1-inch service has obviously more flows, and there's a higher fee for it and such. a higher fee for it and such. What we're finding is that with the, the new building codes and the requirements for fire flow, is that if you don't have, or if you have to have a sprinkler in your house, you need the larger meter. So we're faced with, the dilemma is that future development is probably all going to require a one-inch meter, but right now, we don't always need them, and it's a lower cost. So we need to figure out a mechanism to, to basically not put in any meters that are smaller than one inch, but still be able to give our residents the ability to only have a connection fee if they're not using that much water. So what we're attempting to do with the language in this water service requirements is kind of define that. So we're saying here that if sprinklers are not required, well, well, first, we're saying, all service lines shall be one-inch diameter minimum. So that's going to make sure that we have, we're future-proofed a bit. But we're saying if sprinklers are not required, and they, and their, the number of plumbing fixture counts, the number of different plumbing fixtures they have is low enough to use a smaller meter, then we're only going to charge them the rates that we're, that we have set up for a smaller meter. I know it's a little bit confusing, but the idea is, we don't want to put in any more smaller, of the smaller meters, we want to put in the one-inch meters, but we want to continue to give parcels that don't use that much water a break in the price. So that's what, that's the whole intent of that paragraph right there.
How future-proof is that? How much can you get up to with a one-inch meter?
I don't know technically how big you can get, but the one-inch meter will serve all the fire sprinklers and usually a one-house and an ADU. So it's, it's, a one-inch meter's pretty big. Let's see, I wanted to highlight in here also that irrigation services have a separate water meter in line. It's not part of that. But again, it wouldn't use that much. There's a separate meter for irrigation. It's not part of that one. We were just talking about needing the one-inch meter. And, and that's all we've got for the water section right now. If nobody has any, or does anybody have any questions on that?
I'm just kind of curious on the irrigation part, and if you know the answer off the top of your head, that's okay. Outside of city facilities and school district facilities, are there a lot of commercial entities that need, that are requiring a, a separate meter for their irrigation?
I think some of these new developments are going to have landscapings that they're going to need to irrigate. And so having this language in there is, is going to help. Large, large businesses usually have irrigation. I'm sure Primera has irrigation out there.
I mean, that's the only one that came to my mind that would be, you know, probably big enough that has, you know, enough landscape.
Right.
Large parking lots, but you know, everything that was coming to my mind is like playfields and, you know, parks or, or, or schools. But would, would a, if we're talking about, like, say, you know, like a, a new mixed-use development that's coming in, you know, into the town center area.
Right.
The only real green space they have is maybe, you know, in the, in the planting strip, but it's irrigated. Would they require a, a separate irrigation meter for just the planting strip?
Well, in some areas of town center, like on 56th, I think we're putting in the, the infrastructure, the irrigation for the hanging pots and such.
Mm-hmm.
Flower pot, flower baskets. I think that irrigation would be needed to establish any street trees and, and plantings in the landscaped area. And then some of the standards for the town center is going to be either a landscaped frontage or storefront, frontage. And I would think that with, with any landscaping, once it's established, you may or may not need the irrigation, but most, I, I think they're going to need to have an irrigation meter for some of these plantings.
Okay.
Is, so would there be a difference between a mixed-use development needing irrigation and a single-family home needing irrigation? That seems a little, I guess, it's a, a large standard to hold on single-family homes as compared to a housing development that might have public amenities that do need to be obviously irrigated and probably paid for by an HOA?
I agree. I, I think usually, you don't see too much irrigation on a single-family home. So I, I can't say for sure if somebody chooses to want to irrigate, then, you know, we've just got the one-size meter, I believe, for that purpose. And if we have situations where we need bigger meters, then we have that flexibility. I can see if there's maybe some additional language that we could put in here to maybe clarify that.
I think the language in here does just list commercial.
It, it does.
Industrial.
Okay. So maybe, maybe some clarification that's written there that.
Yep. Doesn't apply to single-family homes.
First read that as.
You bought it to home.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do too.
If I wanted to build my, a new home.
Because, yeah, we're thinking about undergrowth. In my house.
And does this address gray water irrigation at all? Like, either recycled or rainwater collection or anything like that?
This does not. I suppose that would be a good discussion to have, but I know in order to collect or harvest rainwater on a large scale, there's a lot of issues that go along with that. Making sure your tanks are strong enough and seismic and things like that, as opposed to the, you know, the single-family rain barrel, you know, that's a different issue. But we didn't put any language in here about harvesting rainwater. But we can look into it if you think that'd be useful.
Okay. I know it's a common, like, green building requirement, and like, I don't know if I've seen it as much like in this region. But definitely, it's something that I've seen on, like, commercial buildings try to use, and so maybe that also goes into low-impact development and things like that. But being able to sort of recycle the water to lower the stress on the sewer system and also the stormwater systems could be a, I don't know if that's the purpose of this section here. This seems like it's more metering, but if this is development standards that address irrigation, which might be a standard detail, I think that'd be something that we'd want to look into a little bit more.
I will look into that and report back next meeting.
Is irrigation metering, is that at a different rate?
Let's see, I don't know. I don't know that it is. I think that if we're paying the same wholesale cost for water, I don't know that it would necessarily be different. But I could find out about that, too.
I had a question not related to irrigation. The, did I see a section in there on repair of water facilities?
This is just design, not repair.
Okay, I think I might have been imagining that, then.
Oh, there, there is some stuff here, you know, about what to do if it's being replaced, but it's not really a repair.
Okay.
Yeah. Let's see. So now, let's jump into the construction chapter. And here, we get to talk about noise. So currently, the city code doesn't really specify hours for noise, other than what we're seeing here where you're not allowed to have, you know, equipment noises between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. It doesn't say anything about limiting them to weekdays or weekends or holidays. It's just 10 to 7. And most jurisdictions, I know at least on Saturdays and Sundays and holidays, won't let you start until 9:00 AM without a noise variance. So that jumped out as something that I think we want to update in the code, is to limit the amount of noise that you can make before 9:00 AM on the weekends. And then the, the second piece that's missing there is how much noise is too much noise. We don't have any decibels in our code, and so some of the other jurisdictions will have, you know, no noise above, say, 45 decibels or something at night. I think having some actual values about what's too loud, how far away, and the hours, would all go a long ways to helping to manage construction noise and, and other types of noise, which is a, a public nuisance after hours, so. So we were going to propose some modifications to code, and then our language in here would reflect what we change in the code. So this is just kind of to give you an early heads-up that, yeah, noise is, I think, an important issue that we want to try and do something with.
Is allowing construction noise till 10 o'clock at night, is that pretty standard amongst?
It, it is, yeah. I think the county actually might stop it at 9, but Edmund, Shoreline, some Amish, Redmond, they all let it go till 10 on a weeknight. And again, as, noise, I think, is going to be a, a topic that the council's interested in, and, you know, we can set it at whatever we want. If we have a, if you have a, a major construction project, you know, they will sometimes want to go till 10 to get it done sooner and get out of there. But they always have the option of applying for a variance. So if you get a noise variance, they, we can set the hours per project anyway, so.
Okay.
So maybe it's 9 o'clock, maybe it's 10 o'clock, I, I don't know. That, that's to be determined.
Can you talk a little bit about the levels that you're looking at?
Yes. Here's an example from Shoreline. Shoreline actually has different classifications for areas, residential zones, non-residential zones, and industrial land use zones. But they have a different, they have a chart for the different types of noise in each one of these zones for different times at night. So in the residential zones, they say 55 decibels, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM weekends, and 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, sorry, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM weekdays, and 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM on weekends.
Do they specify how long that's measured over?
Oh, like, yeah.
They say, five, let's see. Any hour of day or night, the applicable maximum permissible noise levels may be exceeded for any receiving property by no more than 5 decibels for 15 minutes in any one-hour period, or 10 for 5 minutes, or 15 for 1 and 1/2 minutes. So they get quite detailed as to what the measures are, and I think that would make it easier to enforce something like this. So we would, when we get to proposing changes to the code, I think we would have some recommendations about what would make sense for Mount Lake Terrace.
Okay, that sounds pretty similar to the, the level set in the state noise code, which I think also have like a similar kind of time duration that they have for overall noise levels. I think Seattle might also have like a peak noise level, like, if you got like the, you know, the, the hammering or the air gun or whatever that goes out.
Yeah.
They might have some of that. And I think that, like, they also have an enforcement department as well that kind of goes out and periodically measures construction sites, which I imagine is probably something that we might not do. But I guess, I think I had a question in there, but I don't remember what it was, so I apologize. Yeah, I'm interested to see a little bit more about how this develops and how it relates to, this sounds like it's specific to construction noise, but our local. Yeah, yeah. And our, and our own local noise ordinance, like, I think, is, the last time I looked at it, like, really didn't talk about very much, and most of the other noise ordinance I've, I've seen locally, at least copied the state ordinance in some way. It might make it a little bit specific. So for things like, you know, construction noise or pumps or things like that, some other states also kind of, like, look at things like tonality, like if it's, you know, the way that you can kind of, the way that you measure sound, a weighting kind of averages, like, you know, sort of close to human hearing, but then there's other, also other weightings that might measure like more frequent, low-frequency noise a little bit better. And then also, like, across the spectrum, like, you might have a, like a, you know, piece of equipment that'll go, like a particular tone that isn't necessarily captured by the state noise ordinance, but some other states, like, look at that kind of thing. So we might want to look more closely at that.
Yeah, there's, there's lots of options as to how we would structure that. Sometimes, I think when we put too many restrictions on it, there's somebody who will figure out how to worm their way through those. And so maybe something that's a little vaguer, all-encompassing can also be useful as a, as a final backstop on that. But yeah, definitely, this is an important item for discussion.
Yeah, and if we can update our overall noise ordinance beyond construction as well, I think that'll be helpful, that'll, that'll help clarify a lot of things.
Yes. Anybody else? Let's see, what's next on here? Temporary traffic control? I just wanted, this kind of follows a lot of the temporary traffic control items that we look for in traffic plans when there's construction and they're closing a lane or closing a sidewalk or whatever. One thing that I noticed was lacking that we want to make sure we include now, though, is whenever you change, close a sidewalk, you still need to make sure your, your new route meets ADA. It has to be compliant for the ADA criteria, and it's something that we're going to work into all of our traffic control plans. Basic road closure hours, ADA compliance, these are all going to be factors in there.
Is 10 days long enough for the city to review the plan and approve it?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, some plans are a little more complicated, but the straightforward ones, we can do that fairly quickly. And, you know, there's examples that you can follow in, in manuals like the MUTCD and, and such that can make it really easy to develop them. We're trying to decide if we're going to include some typical cases, and these standard plans are not. Wash dot U's to provide kind of a, the K-plans, they call them, which would be generic plans that cities could adopt, but they quit maintaining those a few years back. So if a local jurisdiction wants to use them, they have to make them their own. But we could.
Could you describe what we currently do?
Currently, a contractor will submit a plan, we'll review it, we'll make comments on it. There's certain elements that we want to have on the plans, and if we don't have a checklist, we will by the time we're done with this document about the certain elements that you need on a traffic control plan. A lot of it's outlined in the MUTCD.
Okay.
And that's the manual on uniform traffic control devices. It's put out by the feds.
Does that cover pedestrian or bicycle or transit at all?
It, it has some language in there, but it's pretty generic. It, it says, when you close a lane, here's the type of signage that you would use, and the, the type of striping you would use, how to set up for flaggers, you know, multi-lane setups. It's got a lot of typical cases, but you cannot cover all the cases that you can uncover out there. Every intersection is different, every road's different. So it's basically outlining the principles that you would follow, and then you would apply them into the plan. And then you would apply them into the plan to fit the specific site. So transit, if it happens to be a transit route, you know, we make sure that there's notations on there that you have to coordinate with local, either school buses or CT, whichever the transit agency is. You know, we'll look at it to see, does it make sense to just close the site to pedestrians? Or can we reroute pedestrians and maintain access? You know, you have to deal with driveways, there's a lot of different things. And the MUTCD isn't that specific. So that's why we end up having to do a custom plan for every site.
Okay. So I will say, this is something the city does not do very well currently. So I'm glad you're looking at this. So I'll often use the bridge over 236th. On 236th over, and then also in 220th, where they've got the light rail construction. And on 236th, like, there have been days where, like, you know, they've just, like, coned off even a bus stop and, like, then the sidewalk and then a bunch of other things. And so when I'm riding my bike down to do my errands down at, like, you know, the stores on 99, like, I have to actually kind of go with traffic. And like, you know, I'm like an able-bodied person on a bicycle. So like, you know, people who might have more mobility challenges than I do, like, will definitely experience this. And there's always this sign that says "End Construction" that, like, blocks about 3/4 of the sidewalk that they put there, that somebody has to move, like, you know, out of the sidewalk a little bit. So, like, I think this, and then on 220th, there's like this cone that's kind of like impinging on the sidewalk that's like under the, you know, there's that sidewalk that's on the south side of the bridge, and then the traffic light, and then the light rail goes over it. There's a cone that's both blocking mobility for that right turn lane and then also, or blocking mobility for, and visibility as you've got that sidewalk that's right next to that right turn lane. So it's creating some pretty dangerous situations. And, like, it's something that I think we need to look at a little bit more closely because maintaining not just traffic, like, I would actually recommend changing the name of this section from Traffic Control to Mobility Control because there's a lot of ways that people get around that are impacted by construction. And it's something that, like, you know, when I walk around, I don't really see, like, you know, the townhouses by Amontilla is a good example. Like, you're walking, like, you know, maybe a quarter mile on the sidewalk that doesn't really have any crosswalks. And then all of a sudden, you come up on this sidewalk closed sign, and like, what do you even do at that point?
That is all something that we're going to improve in our traffic control plans. If you're running into a specific problem right now, shoot me an email and we can have somebody take a look at it. Because these are principles we should be following now. We're just starting to get it a little clearer in the design guide here. And I've noticed in some traffic control plans I've reviewed in other jurisdictions that the state will require, like, 48-inch signs. You don't need a 48-inch sign on a city street. 36 is plenty. And especially when they're mounting them on a tripod on a sidewalk, they can really be an obstruction sometimes. So when I see stuff like that, we can, or when we see stuff like that, we can have, talk to the contractor to adjust them so that they leave a path through there. But again, we will, we have language that we'll be putting into these traffic control plans to try to address that.
That's good, yeah. I will say that whenever I've contacted the city about these things, they've been pretty good about addressing them. So thanks for that. It'd be nice if we could catch that before it happens, though. So, like, identifying, like, you know, saying basically you have to kind of maintain a sidewalk route and, like, where one exists, for example. And it sounds like you're addressing that with ADA here as well.
Yes.
Yeah. I would suggest, though, changing the name of the section from Traffic Control to something relating to traffic, which kind of implies just cars, to also mobility, to kind of more accurately capture its scope.
The only reason I would probably keep it as Temporary Traffic Control is that's kind of the standard description of it. And you'll see that in the MUTCD also. So if somebody's actually looking for the city's guidance on it, they'll look for that keyword. But I can certainly emphasize in here, it's all mobility, not just cars. It's cars and bikes and pedestrians, absolutely.
Yeah, I think that would be a fantastic addition there. And if there is a way to put it in the title, like, that kind of, you know, sort of helps it pop out. But is there any provision for bike lanes, or do they have to merge with traffic?
It all depends on the worksite. If there's room to maintain the bike lanes, we will maintain the bike lanes. But just like we have to close a lane sometimes, sometimes we have to close a bike lane. But if we do close a bike lane, we have to make sure that the provision is that it's done safely and that the area that we're sending the bikes to is going to be free of bumps or gravel or, it still has to be safe for a bicyclist, so.
Okay. There are a few roads where we have, this is not that common, but I think there are a few roads where we kind of have bike lanes that sort of separate from more high-volume and higher-speed traffic. Like, 236th is kind of like on that line, I would think, whereas kind of, you know, 30 mile an hour traffic, but like, the traffic volumes are somewhat high at certain times of day. If we could look a little bit more at, like, at what condition, like, it's more dangerous for the bicycles to have to merge with traffic, I think. And then, like, develop mobility plans around that to reduce danger to bicyclists. I think that's another area that, I know even the, sort of the, I think the ASHTO is coming out with a new bicycle design manual in a few months or something. You know, I don't know if that's in this round or in a future round, but I think that's another area that needs a little bit of a look at. Like, you know, if you're closing a bicycle facility and you're providing an alternate route that runs on a road that is dangerous to users who might not be comfortable with riding on the roads or just kind of inherently dangerous to bicyclists. Like, you know, I guess the example I'm thinking of is, like, you're cutting a, you know, bike trail or an off-bike facility to a school. And then, like, you're kind of expecting the kids who might bike to the school to go, like, kind of on 44th or something. Like, you know, sort of identifying conditions where you would need to provide an alternate bicycle path or where bicycles should not merge with road traffic.
I know that with each individual worksite, we'll, you know, work to find the safest route that we can to make it happen. It's hard to say without specific sites, but we will make sure there's an emphasis on accommodating our bicycles and pedestrian users out there along with the cars.
All right, fantastic.
Is the traffic control plan, is that required on all, for all streets or just arterials?
All streets. Anytime you want to use some of the public right-of-way for a project, you know, taking away parking, or you could close a street for, to do some utility work, whether it's local or arterial, we need to have a traffic control plan.
Okay. I only ask because for ASHTO, they, you know, they have to submit right-of-way impact plans that shows, you know, some, you know, if there's like construction staging or something going on. But depending on where the project is located, if it's on like a small side street, the system doesn't automatically request a traffic control plan. But usually, if it's on a larger street or an arterial, automatically, when they're applying for the permit, they have to provide that document as well.
I used to require them on local streets in ASHTO.
Now, it's possible the reviewer may decide to require it later on, but it's the system, you know, it, just based off of the address ID, it will, you know, sometimes it'll ask for it, and sometimes it won't. So I was just kind of curious. Always being asked for here.
To the best of my knowledge, if we're using part of the right-of-way, we'll want to have a traffic control plan, just to make sure that the contractor doesn't, you know, reserve more of the space than they're supposed to or close a street off when, basically, we're trying to make sure there's no surprises and keeping the local public and the residents as informed as possible, and the businesses.
Is that the same, like, say, I mean, this, we're talking about construction here, but in terms of traffic control, say, if it's a utility having to do work on the pole, like, replacing a pole or just, you know, installing something on the pole, are they having to submit a traffic control plan, too, on those smaller streets?
If they're just parking and putting a ladder up, I mean, that's just part of their normal maintenance business. And they're not, they're not taking a lane, they're just parking. Now, if they're trying to take a lane or something, depending on how long they're out there, they may need a permit. Some of the utilities have franchise agreements that kind of spell that out. Not all of them have them, but most of them have a franchise agreement. And there will be information in there about when they need a permit and when they don't.
What about pedestrian safety? So like Connex boxes, you see that a lot in Seattle. If they're taking up the street so that they can maintain pedestrian traffic, they'll put up like a Connex box that's essentially a walkway to protect pedestrians from overhead cranes or work going on nearby. Is that covered in any of the language? Because I can see probably a lot of that happening as.
In the future.
It, we talked about that, you know, whether we should put in, you know, the metal storage boxes and keep the sidewalk open. We haven't addressed it in this yet. You know, we don't have any of those situations currently planned in the city. And so we can address it on a case-by-case basis. If we start to see an influx of that, then we can standardize it some more. Right now, we're just planning on dealing with it as the case may arise. There's a big expense to the contractors, so they're going to push back on not wanting that. But it's also one of our goals is to maintain as much access as we can, especially if it's going to be a year and a half to do the development. So it's going to be a case-by-case basis, I guess.
And that's something I could see that would be dictated by right-of-ways, like, major arterials. We would want it, obviously, on, you know, 236th, 220th, streets like that, whereas side streets, yeah, I could see that being probably, you know, a case-by-case basis.
Well, and you've noticed in Seattle that sometimes when you have dueling developments there, there's a fight over which sidewalk gets closed and which one's open. And that, I think that's what helped to drive some of these creative solutions. And you'll also see them take up the parking lanes and, you know, whatever they can to get as much of a construction footprint as they can. So it's really a unique situation each time. It's, but it's in the toolbox. I guess that's the final answer, is it is an item in our toolbox. If we need to do something like that, then we would condition the development to do that. These are great questions.
No, thank you.
Let's see, what do we have next here? Sidewalks. We didn't have a lot of language about how to deal with sidewalks and amenity zones. And so I just wanted to highlight that we're developing some more standard details, like for root barriers and such. Okay, we're kind of borrowing in from some of the stuff Bellevue did, but I'm not going to tell anybody. The, but root barriers are something that we're going to want to see more and more of. If we're going to invest in our sidewalks and new curbs and gutter, we don't want the street trees uplifting our new sidewalks.
Thank you.
So we're kind of thinking with some of these criteria is to minimize our long-term maintenance. So, but there's not a lot of information about how do you place a root barrier out there? How close to the surface of the sidewalk is it? You know, how do you anchor it? So we've got some details that look really good for that, that we'll be adding to our manual. We have a section on landscaping. I did see one, just looking through this before we started, I have some duplicate information in here, so we'll clean this up. But there is section for, I think this whole area is kind of duplicated further up the page before, so I'll go clean up this language when you see this again. We have curbs and gutter construction, and just, this is pretty much standard what we've been doing. We just wanted to get it in one spot. We've got some new information here for pavement restoration. There's going to be more information about pavement restoration when we get into the street chapters, hopefully in the next meeting. One of the things that we don't have currently in Mountain Lake Terrace is a moratorium on cutting into newly paved streets. So I think some of the other local jurisdictions have like a five-year moratorium. If you have to cut into a street for a utility connection or something, you end up having to, you know, pave the, a half-street overlay or a full street, depending on where it is, if you cut into new paving. So we're going to have some language like that to kind of try to discourage too much ripping up of our new asphalt. This one here, we're also going to add some details in for how to repair concrete pavement. You know, we have some concrete roads and some concrete panels out there, but we don't have any details about how we would restore them if somebody has to cut into them. Usually with a concrete panel, you don't just cut a patch, you take it and replace the whole panel. Keeps you from having washboard in the end. What else do we have here? We have some language in here about utility trenches and steel plates. You know, we want to, we want to maintain some control about when we have steel plates out there, how long they're out there. You know, if one starts to get dislodged, you know, how we can try to reduce the bump and get them repaired right away. There are some times where if the weather's looking like snow or ice or something, we don't want them to put plates out there. So, you know, there's a lot of coordination that'll happen with the contractor, but we thought we would add some language in here about how to protect trenches and the use of steel plates. We have channelization. When we design the striping on a road, which is what channelization is, we want to make sure that all the markings are inspected before they go out there and paint them, so we don't have to have anybody grinding them out and changing them if they went in the wrong place. We have language about testing of materials now that was really kind of, it was kind of followed, but it wasn't codified anywhere. So we put that in there. And we added some language about if you're getting stop-work orders because your, of your activities are, you're not following them, so. Then we'll, if there's no questions, I'll move into the inspection chapter.
I had a quick question.
Sure.
The sidewalks and pavement, that's specific to activities relating to construction, right?
Right. There'll be more language and design criteria for sidewalks and pavement in the street section. This is more about when they're building it, here's what they'll have to follow.
Okay, thanks, I thought that was the case, just wanted to confirm.
That's a good point, though. And then we piece together some information for the inspectors and the different type of inspection requirements. Record drawings is an area that we're going to have to have some more discussion on. Currently, when it comes to record drawings, and I think I'm skipping ahead, but record drawings, when you're done with your project and you got to submit the ASBILs to the city, the standard way of doing that is with, you know, the plastic Mylar sheets. Mylars, while they last a long time, they're very big and bulky and you have to pay to store them. And a lot of people are going digital these days. So there's pros and cons, you know, do you get the final Mylar sheets? Or do you, do you store them in digital format in a couple places? You know, what's the best way to archive this information for the city? So we're still exploring that, what would be the best medium? Is it, maybe it's some type of a combination of it. But I know that during COVID, it was, one of the other jurisdictions I worked at, the signing of Mylars became a real challenge when the cities are shut down and trying to get Mylars. It's expensive to print up the Mylar sheets. And so, you know, we found and learned during COVID that electronic plans work really well, and it's a lot more flexible, and it's a lower cost to the developers. So we're looking at, you know, how do we adapt these lessons to benefit both the developer community and our needs? Because, again, trying to store. Uh, because again, trying to store, uh, materials is, uh, you know, that's, that's a big cost. And, um, you know, a lot of times we'll get them, we'll get the Mylars in and then we won't use them anymore. You know, we'll need them in an emergency for sure, but maybe if we have got some redundancy in our electronics storage, then maybe we don't need them. I don't know. It's a, but I wanted to highlight that as that's one of the issues that we were talking about internally and we'll have some more recommendations, uh, at a later date.
Have any cities moved to like all PDF or AutoCAD type of submissions? Is that?
Some, some cities have, yeah. I mean, uh, uh, I think we're, I think we're, we're a little bit behind the eight ball there on, you know, just addressing the issue. And, and again, there's pros and cons to using the Mylars. But I know that some jurisdictions have decided not to require Mylars anymore, they're just requiring the electronic files. Uh, but again, you need to have some type of a backup, so you have to solve the problem of, uh, backups, multiple backups on the cloud, or how do you need them in an emergency? We may end up, uh, for some of our maps, when there's an emergency, having to print off paper copies every now and then.
Yeah. Is that, is that common? So, um, I, granted, I work in buildings, I don't work in infrastructure so much, but, um, I've worked in the construction industry for nearly twenty years and the only time I've ever seen Mylar is in like some kind of historic record, um, where you're looking at buildings from the thirties or something. Is that common in civil infrastructure projects?
It, it's still a requirement in our stuff. And some of the other local jurisdictions, uh, still have requir- Mylar requirements also in their lang- in the language in their, uh, checklist. So it's just trying to address that and just, and making the business decision, does that still make sense or is there a better way to do it?
Yeah. I mean, so in buildings, um, it's a lot more common nowadays, uh, especially for large, like, uh, facilities to do things like getting a copy of the BIM model, for example, right? So that they have a record of like a 3D model of their entire building with like where all the pipes and stuff go and like, that helps with their facilities management. I don't know if there's a, you know, I'm not qualified to, I, I don't, I don't know what they do in civil engineering, um, if that's common or not, or if they've got technology like that, but, um, I would have expected something like that maybe to be more like what kind of facility, like things do we ask for as ASBILs records? So I look forward to hearing, learning more about this. But I'm just also kind of wanted to say, wow, Mylars, I don't think I've ever encountered them in my.
Second, second Adam.
Yeah.
Worked as a CAD and BIM operator for contractors and have never seen Mylar in twenty years of, of working, so.
Yeah. I, uh, I helped to remove the Mylar requirement in my previous position, so, yeah, it, it's, I mean, just, you can easily get three hundred sheet plan sets and trying to do that in Mylar would just be, uh, you couldn't even lift them, I know. Yeah, so, so anyway, we, yeah, we're going to address that and try to have some strong recommendations about what's the best way to move forward, but we have to involve our IT folks with that one.
Yeah.
I know for, um, for us, that, for at least the hundred percent, um, SIP plants that need signing off, they, they use Adobe Sign.
Yeah.
It goes out to everybody and then, once everybody's signed off, then the master copies get archived somewhere, but you know, that's, that's before they're, they get the okay to actually do the work, once, you know, the actual official record, I, I'm, I'm not sure, um, but what they use.
It's, uh, uh, COVID, we learned some good lessons with COVID. I mean, DocuSign was, became a lot more easier to use. You know, virtual meetings were basically non-existent before COVID. So there's been a lot of good efficiencies, I think, that were developed during that. And, uh, I don't necessarily wanna go back to the way things were. If we've, if we've learned some efficiencies, I think we should take advantage of them.
Adobe Sign is a little finicky. Definitely, and this, this is up to the PM to make sure, that signature block better be empty. Cause a lot of, a lot of times the, you know, the sub might submit it with their initials already in it, not gonna work. Tell them to send them a blank one. It's, and it's, it, it can slow up the process.
Okay.
Yeah, I learned that with, uh, Bluebeam is, if you have the, uh, the signature block has to be in the same spot on every page, and then you can apply your signatures, you know, to all of them with just a couple clicks. But if it's not the same place, then you gotta go each sheet and move it around and... Anyway, yeah, there's lots of things that you have to do to make sure it works, but it can work and it can be, it can be better in some places, so. Let's see, what else do I have here? I think that's about it, because, uh, the main issue with the project closeout was gonna be the final record drawings, and I think we just discussed a lot of that, so. Again, in the overview of the closeout, we're just starting to document all the different things that we'll require from somebody when they get a permit to close it out. And with that, I think I'm about done for the night. I can, uh, if you want, I can go through the, uh, the appendices that we put together that I didn't get a chance to share with you in advance. We can go through that?
Sure.
Let's see. This is going to be, let's see, did that show up? Nope, I gotta stop share. This is gonna be one of our appendices, the stormwater development guidelines. So we've, uh, uh, this is where we start to get into some of the low-impact development, VMPs. Now, I can make these documents available to you, uh, in electronic form, so. But this is, uh, this is where we kind of codify all the different requirements for our, um, stormwater facilities. And again, I think this is pretty much the standard practice, but just having it all outlined, uh, makes it easier for the designer to be able to, uh, uh, make a complete application and address all the issues that need to be addressed. This is where we'll be able, this, this appendix will be a standalone section that we can hand out and people can go through it. Uh, this covers everything from the soils testing, the, uh, survey of existing vegetation, the type of maps that you need to have with your stormwater report. Um, and these are, uh, also elements that are pulled out of the, the 2019 Snohomish, the Ecology Stormwater Manual. Um, and, uh, uh, these are where we've tried to enhance a little bit over what, uh, we want on top of that. I wanna zoom back to the end of this where we've got some of the flow charts to kind of help people wa- walk through what stormwater requirements they'll need for their site. I don't know. These, uh, these flow charts, we've used these quite a bit to try to help us decide what kind of, uh, uh, treatment that we need out there. So if you go through the flow chart, you can, does a site have thirty-five percent or more of hard surface coverage? If yes, then you have to, uh, follow these requirements. If no, then you have a few other boxes to check, but we have a couple of flow charts here that are really useful in trying to figure out how much of your project or, or how big your, depending on the size of your project, how much you have to, uh, uh, include in your stormwater management and your stormwater report. So that'll be supplied in the appendix here also.
Did these numbers come from the, uh, Snohomish County Stormwater Plan, where it's, uh, five thousand square feet or seven thousand square feet of disturbance are the sort of thresholds?
Yes, I believe so.
So one thing I think I've seen a lot of development happening is, um, in Seattle, they're kind of taking single-family homes and building like two or three homes on there. And, uh, you know, you wouldn't necessarily be adding five thousand square feet of impervious surface per lot, because lots are about five thousand square feet, but it might be kind of close. And so like if you look at it kind of in aggregate over like a whole lot of these lots changing over time, I can see it being sort of a pretty significant, um, impact. I don't think we should necessarily do this for every single lot that's getting redeveloped in Mount Lake Terrace, but it's something we might wanna keep an eye on as we look at, um, things like impervious surface ratios or lot coverage, um, just sort of what the collective impact might be if we do kind of hit these sort of five thousand square foot of new or more hard, or more new hard surfaces. If we're a little bit short of that threshold, um, you know, do we wanna start kind of looking at this more in aggregate of what the potential increase in runoff might be over like doing, like small amounts over a large area?
I think we had some language about aggregate development, um, that we talked about last time. So there might be something in the stormwater section that talks about that already. I think, uh, section twenty dot eleven talks about phased projects. I think there was some people or some developments try to phase their projects, and I think we wanted to make sure that we addressed these as the cumulative. Yeah, it says here, phasing of projects shall not result in a reduction of stormwater and/or erosion control requirements. But I think we, we can clarify that because, uh, I think we wanted to separate some of the residential requirements from the commercial and the industrial. I see a note on here that, uh, I gotta address, so.
Okay, yeah, I think that, I think, uh, separating out like by classes of site kind of makes sense in terms of when you're looking at overall impact, like if you have a lot of little things. So I think that sounds like a good direction.
Yep. I think that's all I have.
For the pha- uh, the phasing, is there, um, is there a timeframe that's referenced somewhere?
Uh, I don't see one in here, but, uh, I think that it makes sense to, uh, put some type of a timeframe in there, so, uh, we're going to clarify the language on there and, uh, do that.
Does anybody have any other questions? I am not hearing or seeing anything, so, thank you very much. Lot of information.
Thank you, those are great questions and, uh, we will be back in a month.
Good work. This is, uh, I'm glad this is all living in a single place. I look forward to seeing the, uh, summary report when this is over, uh, of like what has changed between what we had before, cause it also sounds like there's some good improvements here, too.
Yeah, our, our plan is to get something done this summer, just, we need something in place now and then, uh, probably start working on the next revision for next year. Until we get this in a place where we think it's gonna, um, you know, be pretty solid for a while, we're probably gonna update it once a year. Things are always changing, so we wanna be nimble. And it's a lot easier to, uh, it'll be a lot easier to update design standards in this document than to try to update it in the code. Cause if you're updating into the code, you have to go through a lot more hoops.
I'm really glad to see your one-year timeframe for this because, especially as we're encountering a lot of change, I think our standards should be more living documents to reflect new things we're seeing, so, uh, I, that's a good, I like that approach.
Yeah, and if there is something that is, I guess, controversial or is gonna take more discussion, we may just leave it out in this round and address it in the next one, so we have more time to work on it. Um, so, yeah, that's kind of our strategy.
All right, thank you. So we kind of folded items five and six together, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number seven, uh, director's report.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so I'll be standing in today for Kristi, um, who's out of office today. So Jonathan Morales, Senior Planner at the City of Mount Lake Terrace. Uh, so I have a few, uh, quick announcements. First one is, um, just an update on the comprehensive plan, RFP, um, process. So last week, we held three interviews with the selected finalists. Um, that was LDC, Burke Consulting, and OTAC. Um, as of April sixth, Thursday, um, staff did come to a conclusion on, on a, on an awardee. So we are not making that public yet, um, since we have to, um, work through the professional services agreement, um, and bring it to council. So we're tentatively scheduled to go to council, April thirteenth. Um, if we're not able to meet that, the next council work session would be April twenty-seventh. So first, um, thank you to Commissioner Betcher and Jerry Batista for your help with, um, reviewing the RFP proposals. I might believe Kristi shared an update last time on how many proposals we received. Um, the second announcement is that we are hiring for an associate planner. I recently moved into the senior planner role, so we're looking to, um, fill in that position. Um, it's open until filled, I believe it was posted March seventeenth. And just wanted to share an opportunity for training. So Puget Sound Regional Council, in collaboration with the Department of Commerce, is hosting a series of workshops that they're call- calling the Passport to Twenty Forty-Four. Um, these are specific to the comprehensive plan update process. Uh, so on May eighteenth, which is a Thursday, from noon to one thirty PM, they're hosting a Zoom webinar. This is tailored to elected officials and planning commissioners, um, around the central Puget Sound area. Um, so there'll be different topics related to the comprehensive plan update process. There is gonna be a panel of elected officials and we have our very own Mayor Pro Tem Brian Wall on the panel, so. Yeah, just wanted to share that opportunity. If you're able to make it during your lunch hour. Think it'd be a good opportunity.
Noon to one?
To one thirty.
One thirty.
Will you be sending out some sort of email?
Yeah, I'll make sure to, uh, I can work along to, um, get that to you all.
Thank you.
And that concludes my remarks.
Does anybody have any questions for, for staff?
Um, any idea when we'll be a full commission again?
That's a good question, I forgot about that question.
Yeah, I don't have an update on that.
City clerk, we're trying to work with, uh, city council, uh, regarding this schedule and the agenda for interview, uh, for all board commissioners, vacancy and also recruitment as well. So, uh, hopefully by May or June, they will have the schedule for the interview and, uh, city clerk will send out all the information to the, to those who are interested in.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, so that will move on to item number eight, miscellaneous business by Call Planning Commissioners. Anybody have any miscellaneous business? Any known vacations coming up? Absences? Absences?
Not in April.
Yes.
For our next meeting, I'll be in DC. So, yeah, but I need to make a request for, oh, can I request an excused absence for the next meeting?
Yeah, just so we can get it officially on record, what's the date for the next meeting?
The next meeting is 24 April 34.
All right, would anybody like to make a motion?
Motion to excuse Isaac for the next planning commission meeting on April 24th.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. You have an excused absence for the next meeting.
You said DC? Oh, British Columbia.
Oh, BC, oh, see, I thought I heard BC first. Of course, I hear BC, it was like, Boston College, you're going to Boston.
That's a good place to go, too.
Heard good things about it.
Anyone else? Any known absences coming up?
No.
All right.
At all. My vacations work out well.
All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn for the evening.
Exactly. Would you make a motion to say that?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
Sure.
Commissioner Sandoval, would anybody like to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Sandoval for tonight?
I'll motion to excuse Commissioner Sandoval.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Commissioner Sandoval has an excused absence for this evening. So, one more time, anyone else? Yes, no? All right, I'm not hearing or seeing anything, I'll go ahead and declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Recording stopped.